Morning, this is the Park County Commission regular meeting for Tuesday, June 28th at 9:00 a.m. We have three public hearings to start this morning, public hearing and resolution establishing weight restrictions on bridges in Park County, Montana. Morning, Matt.
Morning, commissioners. So this is due to the fact that MDT applies weight ratings to bridges in Montana, but they don't have a function for fines without us having a resolution. It seems a little crazy to me to implement weight restrictions with no ability to do fines. But this goes through and lists the weight restrictions on our bridges after the flooding event, because I got to remove four of them. And just allows us to actually enforce those weight restrictions on bridges.
This public hearing is now open. I'll put comment on this resolution establishing weight restrictions on bridges. This public hearing is now closed. Commission discussion.
Mr. Chair, the only thing I'm concerned about is I think we have some roads that have weight restrictions on bridges that ranchers use, and obviously they're probably breaking the weight restrictions. And how can you not if you're hauling cattle or hay? And I don't know if there's always a way around those. That's just my big concern is are we doing this to find a rancher that can't get out of those ranches shipping cattle?
Well, the other side to that is that if they are hauling overweight loads and they result, the result is damaging the bridge, then we need a way to compensate for that damage.
Right. So are they stuck herding their cattle across the bridge and then loading it somewhere else?
Hauling lighter loads would be an idea.
Just curious if we, if we have a sense if a rancher's loads would typically exceed the capacity of the bridges in question?
What we're seeing traditionally more is aggregate and other construction equipment. That, yeah, some ranchers might be over the load limit, but it's the guys that are loading belly dumps or dump trucks and pumps and that sort of thing. And loading up to their max and hauling them over bridges.
Which is the one we, that we thought went across the late great Carpeval.
Exactly. And so it's, yes, ranchers might be a little bit overweight, but that's not what we're truly looking to curb. It's the guys hauling large amounts of aggregate material that are far exceeding weight restrictions.
Thoughts, discussion?
You know, assuming that the weight limits are legitimate and speak to the capacity and safety of the bridges in question, it would seem to me to certainly make sense to make sure that we are posting those and enforcing those. So, Mr. Chair, I would move that we establish the weight restrictions on bridges in Park County, Montana with this resolution.
Second.
Second, discussion. On favor, I. Motion passes. Thanks, public hearing is on a resolution to implement Mission Field Airport fee rates in charge of schedule.
Yeah, so this was brought forward by the airport board, looking at assessing fees to individuals that land larger private planes at Mission Field. Oftentimes, what happens is they land at Mission Field, park on the taxiway, and drop someone off and take off again, and never spend any money in Park County or contribute to the maintenance of our airport. And so those large planes are damaging to the runway, to the infrastructure we have out there, and they never contribute. So this allows those larger airplanes to contribute to the upkeep of the airport. And then once, or if this passes, we'll work on a a fee waiver for those that invest in the airport in other ways. We have someone right now looking at building a taxiway, and so I, we want to put in a fair and equitable way for those fees to be waived up to and not exceeding the amount of money they put into Mission Field.
We can do that on a MOU, by you, MOU or contract by contract basis.
Yeah, yeah. And then you can see on the rate schedule, this is not for smaller planes. I'm not an expert on planes and weights, but your standard everyday person that flies a plane, even what I would consider a bigger private plane, is over, under that 12,000 weight rating and won't be assessed anything.
Public comment on this agenda. This is, public hearing is now open, public comment. Public comment on the resolution to implement Mission Field Airport fees. This public hearing is now closed. Mission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the resolution to implement Mission, Mission Field Airport fees.
A second.
Second, discussion.
You know, it certainly makes sense to me to have folks pay their own way and not be supporting them with other taxpayer dollars.
We agree.
On favor, I.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public hearing on the resolution requesting distribution of bridge and road safety and accountability program funds, otherwise known as BARSA. Matt?
This is for some state funding that we have from gas tax. BARSA funds, we get about 125,000 to 150,000 a year right now. That kind of is established based on how much gas the state sells and the amount of roads we have. We have it budgeted in this previous year for this helping to pay for Bear Creek Bridge Deck replacement, as well as the Cook City Bridges. We just have to have an official resolution to actually request that money be dispersed from the state.
Thanks, Matt. This public hearing is now open. Public comment on the resolution requesting distribution of BARSA funds. Public comment. Public hearing is now closed. Mission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the resolution requesting distribution of bridge and road safety and accountability program funds.
Second.
Second, discussion, because this is essentially administrative. All in favor, I?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Sketch of public comment. We have a public comment from representative, one or more representatives of the Park County pioneers. Welcome, folks.
I guess that's Dan Nelson, past presidents. We're trying to find out a way to get in the break of fees. In 2019, we put down a $500 fee in front of having the bank put down at the fairgrounds. Couldn't have it because of the pandemic until 2022, which ended up having a thing. We ended up putting another $103. They're nonprofit. Everybody that comes to our bank, but our people of the county that are older people, that are limited people having funds. And then this is the first year where we had to have insurance. We've always been covered under the county's insurance. Now, I don't know what the insurance status is. Well, we ended up paying another $176 for insurance, which we've never done. We've always, Bart knows more about insurance than I do. So we ended up paying almost $603 for rent of the building, $176 for insurance. And I know, I don't know what, maybe you can put something in that.
Well, we have, we were paying $650 for several years, and then it went down to 500, and then it was up to, now it's up to 603. So I don't know who sets that, but you know, that's kind of where we were at. And, but, but we, we lose money every year too. We're not, you know, we're not, this year we were $878 in the hole. So, you know, we're, the only money we have coming in is $5 for dues for anyone 90 or under, and then our memorial. So that's kind of what keeps us close. So some of these fees kind of hit us hard, so.
Bart just told me this week.
Oh, Bart Dodge.
Dennis, anything bad?
Yeah, the thing we'd like you guys to remember is this is a public service, not really like an organization to make profit. It's a public service, and a lot of these senior citizens or pioneers are on a limited budget. And we're trying to keep this at a rate that they can all afford. You know, it's not an extravagant, just a nice meal for everybody with entertainment. So, you know, it's, these people have all paid their shared taxes.
All right, thanks, folks. And this is, this is not our agenda for discussion or decision. But, you know, the only thing I would volunteer by way of information is, is the rates are set, the fee schedule is set based on what it costs for us physically to actually run the fairgrounds for an event, based on staff time and power and water and everything else. So, and I believe you got the nonprofit rate, right?
I don't know. They just gave us a rate.
Right.
It's changed a couple times, but yeah.
And they did give you the nonprofit rate.
Okay.
I think that they also waived the fee for the stage.
I don't know that either.
Yeah, because there isn't usually a separate fee charged.
We just wanted to comment on what the fees are, so we kind of can tell the rest of people what we're offering.
I hope that helps. And the insurance, we can't waive that because we're legally required to.
All the past years, that's why we were kind of in the dark.
Yeah.
Past year, you're always covered under the county's insurance. Things change. We realize that.
Yeah.
We just know in the dark, all of a sudden we have to come up with insurance.
And, and that probably shouldn't have happened.
Things change. We realize that. We had to have an explanation so we could tell you why.
Does that help? That information help?
Well, not really.
Yeah?
I mean, we can sure check the top of Morgan's check in.
Yeah, if there's anything else, you know, we're trying to be fair to everybody to comply with the same standard across the board. And we do have a nonprofit schedule. I think you both got that.
Even like this year with the COVID, I mean, the county have the money that we paid in 19 all the way up through to, and basically we made an agreement in 19 that that's what our banquet price was going to be. And then, so in '22, they raised the price. Well, that's, that's not really right neither.
Did you actually pay the, in 2019?
We pay it like now, we'll pay now for next year's banquet, and then so that you've got that money the whole time that we're waiting.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, so.
Well, we'll talk to Morgan and see if she can sort it out and just see if there's anything we're missing.
Yeah.
And I will say this, the equipment, the chairs, everything down there was 100% better than what it's been in the past.
Thank you. Yeah, it was, it was, yeah. We needed an upgrade.
She's a, she's a good manager. The equipment was good, you know. We did have to use some of our own stuff, but it was because we had more people there than what we expected or what, than what the new facilities were. Dan has tables and chairs and stuff like that, so we're going to fill in.
Sure.
But it's, like I say, the floor was gray, the equipment to clean up and all that.
Well, that's good feedback.
And, and that is the other thing. We do clean up ourselves, you know. It's ready for somebody else to use when we leave.
Well, that's good feedback. We'll pass that on, Morgan. We, we think she does a pretty good job. Thanks.
Yeah, well, thanks for your time.
Sure.
We just had to have some kind of take back to the earth.
Sure. And if, if there's something else, Morgan, you can figure this with that. I'll pass it along too.
But she does, we can, we have no complaints there. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Looking to help.
All right. Public comment for items now on the agenda. I think we have somebody here from the NRC on the Emergency Watershed Protection Program. Robert, are you out there?
I am. Can you hear me?
You can.
Great.
Good morning.
Yeah, good morning. Appreciate the opportunity. Yeah, I was called into this meeting from Commissioner Burr. We talked yesterday about the Natural Resource Conservation Service Emergency Watershed Program that could possibly assist with some of the flood recovery work in Park County. I am a state conservation engineer in Montana out of Bozeman, and also the program manager for the program. My intent here is just to give you an overview of the program. I did distribute a couple documents to you. One, describing how to be a sponsor of the program, and two, what that entails in terms of an agreement with us. So, quick overview. The intent of our program is to reduce the risk of future damage to life and property as a result of a natural disaster. We do not replace things. We just go in and help protect private property, not public property, from potential further damage that can result of what occurred with the flood. The way we do that is, the first step is to have a local sponsor. We cannot proceed without a local sponsor, and that can include city, towns, counties, states, tribes, soil conservation districts, any, you know, political subdivision of the state. So that's why I'm talking to today is, is that Park County could be a potential sponsor for this program. So how we implement it, as I said, this is the first step, securing a sponsor. We go out and do damage assessments on properties that come to the county or come to us and assess them on the, do damage assessments. After doing that, we work with the sponsor to develop an agreement and a funding request to help protect those properties, and then the sponsor goes ahead and implement it. With being a sponsor, of course, there are responsibilities, and I think that's the key thing that you need to understand to make an informed decision here. First thing we would need would be a written request from the county to actually ask requests from NRCS to, to work in your county. And as you, as the sponsor, you would help us publicize it so that landlords could come to you asking for assistance. You would help us with going out and assessing their property, see if they're eligible for the program. If they are eligible, we would put them on the list and try to make a rough cost estimate what it takes to protect that property. Then we would enter into a program agreement with you, and that's one of the pieces of paper I sent to you as an example of that agreement and what it looks like. We would make a, with that agreement, we'd make a formal request for funding to do the work. And with that, we would also require from the sponsor, one, to help us obtain the rights to the property, rights to necessarily plan or build or maintain any of the projects that we build. The sponsor would be also responsible for obtaining all permits, and also responsible for any administering technical services such as project management, engineering, if engineering is needed, contracting that out, and also contracting out the construction of the project. In addition, there is some operation and maintenance responsibilities after the project is built. This typically lasts for five years because we consider primarily these projects temporary protection, with the idea that down the road, something more permanent might be installed. With that also comes, we do pay, with our funding request, we do provide some funding to the county to oversee the project, and also hire any services they need, such as engineering service, construction oversight, that kind of services. That is set at 7.5%, of the construction costs that we ask for. So you would receive that funding to help support the program. And then we pay 100% of that at 7.5%, and then 75% of the construction cost, with 25% being the responsibility of the partner, which can include in-kind services by the people constructing the project, or any, any person involved in the project can be included as in-kind services. How we structure it is up to you. You know, there is a flexibility if, if you, if you, if you are sponsored with our program to actually delegate any of those responsibilities, how you see fit, that's up to you. But bottom line, the, the county would be responsible, but if you, for instance, work with a ditch company that's protecting a head gate, you could have an alternative agreement with them, that they would be responsible for the 25% payment to the county, operation and maintenance of that facility, an oversight of construction. So you, you have the ability to delegate that, so if you, so if you would like to. So how you structure it would be up to you, but our agreement would be with you, and ultimately, we would rely on you to fulfill those roles as a sponsor. So I'll stop there. That's a quick and dirty overview. I definitely recommend looking through that sponsor agreement paperwork that I sent out to you, because that really kind of spells out in depth, but I briefly summarized here. And if you decide, we would need an official request from you to be a sponsor, and then we would proceed with finalizing as many damage surveys, reports as we can, and get our funding request in as soon as possible. Just an FYI, we did see, receive a small amount of preliminary funding, so if there are some really at-risk projects that we want to get started right away, we do have a, a small, a small bit of money right now. Availability money is again on, on, on what's available at headquarters in DC. But I'm anticipating that, given the extent of this flood in Montana, that there's likelihood that we could, could we are likely to receive some funds here in Montana. I'll stop there, and if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Questions? I was just saying, Mr. Tenz, that you, that you've talked with some folks at Paradise Valley that have had, like, blown out that gates and that kind of thing. And you think there would be any interest in their part in terms of the watershed improvements themselves, or?
Yeah, because they, they are part of users' corporation type thing, so I was sure they, the extensive damage to their handcave of the immigrants, major. Maybe they have, can't even put a price to it, but it'd be a lot of money. So I think they would probably be very interested in trying to do something.
You have an interest in kind of doing some follow-up in terms of research on that?
Sure. Yep.
And we really can't take any action today, but we will come back to you. Appreciate sending the materials too, so, yeah, we do receive those.
Great. From Kristen, do you, is this something we can set up pretty soon for another discussion item? I did have one question. Robert had mentioned that someone or someone from the county helped with those damage survey reports. Who typically in a county does that with NRCS staff?
Well, we'd like to. Yeah, we would like to get. Yeah, we'd like to get, you know, a diverse team. We do have our own team, but again, we'd like to have somebody from the county, typically the person that's going to be responsible for overseeing this project, just because the county's going to have to make some decisions. You know, there's never enough money, right? So they're going to have to make possibly some decisions on, these are the batch of projects that we feel are most important. I mean, I know that's a hard decision. Maybe we get enough money to cover them all. But we like to have them on the ground so they know exactly what these projects look like and what they're up against, and, and helping us guide and guiding us on, on which projects might be the highest priority as we go through the list.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. So you said you have some funding. Is it correct that no projects can be started without a sponsor, even though you have some funding already?
That is true. Yeah, we cannot start a project without a local sponsor. But knowing the extent of the, of the flood, I did ask for some preliminary funding, so that if we needed to act quite quick with some emergency projects, we have a little, little batch of money where we can get that done fast before we put in a formal request for a bigger set of money.
I was just going to say it would make sense to me to maybe take a deeper dive with staff over the next couple of days and see if maybe we could schedule a meeting on Thursday or Friday for an action item.
What's, Robert, what's the timeframe in terms of when we would have to have an agreement in place and when we can initiate projects? Is there, is there a clock running on this?
Good question. Yeah, I forgot to cover that. Basically, we have 60 days to do all our damage surveys reports to get that in for funding. So we have a 60, 60-day timeframe to get that request in. It's more of a timeline on how, how quickly we can respond, and the quicker we get an agreement in place, the quicker we can actually get the work done on the ground. So, and get our request in. As I said, we do have a small part of money if there's some big project that needs to happen now. Depending on the size of it, of course, we have a little bit of funding that we could, we could apply to some projects right now.
Based on your, based on your assessment so far, what's your sense of the level of urgency?
Well, it's, as you probably know, in, in the county, I think the, the most urgent properties are the ones where you have the houses teetering on the cliffs, right? We observed several homes where extensive bank erosion has occurred. Again, we've observed several headgates, not in Park County, but other, if they don't do something fast, they'll have a river going down the canal. Those houses and diversions, based on our observations, not only in Park County, but Carbon County, Stillwater County, seem the most urgent. Just trying to keep water going down canals and cause damage downstream, and also those houses that get a big rainstorm, they might be teetering more over, over the, over the brink, so to speak.
And just an estimation in terms of, from the point that we actually established an agreement, when the, when, what's the availability of funds look like in terms of scheduling, starting from that? And when does a project, when can a project be initiated following the establishment of the program?
Well, again, it depends on the project specifically. You know, if we're doing a temporary fix where it's pretty straightforward, not a lot of detailed engineering needs to get done, we just, we need to get protection in before headgate blows out and sends water down towards houses. We do have money and could do that rather quickly. But if it's an extensive, where we need some extensive engineering and evaluation, we would need to hire out, either have a sponsor, hire out an engineer to get that response. As I mentioned yesterday with Bill, it is in the best interests with the sponsors or who they're going to work with to try to secure a contractor too. Contractors are tough to come by, and in my experience, if the sponsor puts out a request for proposals and just gets a contractor on a force account based, evaluating based on unit prices, and they're ready to move, that typically expedites our response. If we try to hire contracts, project after project after project, that can take a long time, and placing that on the landowner to hire the engineer, and not to say that you can't do this, but to hire an engineer, get a set, a quick set of plans, hire a contractor, that can extend the recovery time. So I guess in the past, I have recommended to, to sponsors to try to at least get a couple contractors on a force account so that we can deploy them quickly if needed.
So Matt, you would have a role in that. So what are your thoughts?
We're pretty busy at the moment, but luckily I've got great foreman. So if I need to step back and let them manage their departments a little more independently and help out with this, we can do that, because it sounds like of all the different local and state agencies, we're probably the people that can get it done the fastest. So I think things like headgates for Paradise Valley are pretty important to our community and economy and everything, and so we just need to do it.
If you can assess the potential need out there, maybe just by telling. If you can assess the potential need out there, maybe just by talking around some of the folks you know up there, I can start running by the agreement itself by legal, but obviously constrained as far as civil attorney review right now. So I'll see what I can do in the next couple of days and maybe set up a meeting as soon as it looks like it's feasible based on all those factors going together.
You bet.
Excellent.
Yep.
Okay.
And I left my contact information with Commissioner Burge, so he has my contact information.
Yeah, we have a friend in email as well, so.
Yeah, okay, great.
I'll be reached out soon.
Great, all right. Thank you, we'll see.
Great, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Hi, additional public comment on the agenda?
Is that Mr. FEMA?
Let's see, he's from DNRC, this is the NRCS Emergency Watershed Protection Program. You should have an email on that too. Check that, a bunch of information there. All right, action items, discussion decision on abandonment of Park County right away in Willso. This is like Groundhog did, isn't it?
This is very exciting. This is six years in the night. Getting that plan to abandon if we approve it. Very small road in front of the rodeo grounds in Willso.
Okay. We've looked at this a couple of times, been waiting on some documentation, so it looks like we've got everything sewn up at this point.
Yes.
Public comment on this agenda item. Commission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I very happily move to abandon this section of road. I think it's called Darlene Street.
I'll happily second, time for some closure.
Absolutely.
Who says we can't get something done?
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you for seeing this through to completion. If what's secured?
Yep.
Discussion decision approved from Open Container waiver number 2207-1M, Owl Lounge. This is kind of an annual exercise for the.
For the rodeo, yep. Owl Lounge is finally up all. And I called last night and I told him I didn't see a problem with it.
Public comment on this agenda item. Mission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the open container waiver number 2207-1M for the Owl Lounge.
Long. Has it spelled?
Second.
Moving second, a discussion.
Let there be some joy in Park County.
There you go.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Question decision and a resolution from the compensation board. This is formalizing the decision on the increases or the cost of living increases for next fiscal year. Public comment on this agenda item.
Public comment?
Sure.
Yes, the compensation board met on May 24th and along with the compensation board, including Alex Ray, Cindy Brigger, and Brian Wells, I believe, as on the compensation board, met along with all the elected officials who were available and determined to make a 5% increase for all elected officials. So this resolution documents that there. I do have one change to it that I'll provide to you just describing more thoroughly, describing the sheriff's pay because we have that change on October 1st. So I just wanted to clarify exactly what that entailed with the longevity and that change for October 1st and then moving forward, what that will look like for the sheriff. So I have the documented document with just a change, with just an addition to them.
Good, thanks. Public comment? Mission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the, I'm looking for it here.
Resolution compensation.
Resolution for compensation board.
A second.
Moving second, a discussion. Are you consistent with what Erica has in her budget too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've called for you to know herself. She double-checked everything.
Thank you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Discussion decision on SE-15-22 Rivera Family Transfer. Mike, are you on this morning?
Good morning, Commissioners, Jeff Bum here. So this is a family transfer that we received back in May. It's been reviewed and approved by the Attorney's Office Planning and Sanitation. The proposal is a 10-acre transfer to Ashley Fleming from Alberta Rivera, meets all the uniform standards and monumentations for their certificate of survey. And this is the public meeting for your consideration to ask any questions in trying to determine intent.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Public comment on this agenda item, and if anyone here is from the family in question, this would be your opportunity to comment as well.
This is, George is here, so to represent Alberta and her daughter. I don't know if she's online or not.
Okay, mission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Rivera family transfer.
I second.
Second, discussion, looks like it's about as straightforward as it gets.
Yeah. Good work, George.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks, George.
Yeah, thanks on behalf of Riveras, thanks for them as well.
Okay, I'll see Platts coming through pretty shortly.
Right on, bye.
Thank you, George. Discussion decision on approval of contracts for recycling, two of those, yeah.
These are the two cardboard, or the two recycling contracts we have. One for recycling of cardboard, one for recycling of the triple bins. Those hadn't been updated in a couple of years and needed updated. Both Full Circle and Four Quarters came forward hoping to do three years at 5% rate increase every year. Solid Waste Board wasn't sure they wanted to do that. And so we kind of have three options for how to move forward with these contracts. A one-year contract that then we'll just have to work on renewing every year and can go up by whatever we agree to, three-year at 5% or three-year with the Western State CPI increase. My personal recommendation is to go with the 5% for three years. I think the Western State CPI this year is definitely higher than 5% and likely could be higher than 5% every year. But I kind of want to leave that up to you because the Solid Waste Board couldn't come to a conclusion and we need to move forward with it for a new contract for July 1st.
Thanks, Matt. Public comment on this agenda? Commission discussion. Yeah, I guess the escalator is kind of, it's just a question of what your estimate is on place, I guess. I can't imagine the energy costs won't come down, but probably not soon. I think that's probably a third of what's in that 8.6% currently, so I don't know. I'm okay with 5%.
Yeah, I think it has to be said that they've given us a deal for a long time. They've been working on a contract that was four years old?
Yep.
Four or five years old, not charge increases whatsoever, so I have no problem with 5%.
And I think the thing is if it's dramatically different from that, we can kind of take into consideration for the next three-year cycle or way or term cycle.
Yep, and we still have the 30-day, we can cancel the contract as well if needed, but it's a double balance. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, I think the 5% establishes some predictability. So, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve a contract for recycling with an annual increase of 5% a year.
Second.
Moving second, discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Discussion decision on signing DPHHS Taskwater for Public Health Crisis Workforce Funding. Shannon, are you listening?
Yes, I am, thanks. So this is, morning, this is the contract with the state to provide funding for this position. The commission probably about a month ago or so approved the position, which is additional workforce to help the health department and the sanitation department license vacation rentals.
Okay, thanks, Shannon. Public comment on this agenda? Mission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the signing of the DPHHS Taskwater for Public Health Crisis Workforce.
I second.
Moving second, a discussion. Looks like the department pays contractor reimbursement up to $78,000 all month, so that will go a long way towards position.
Yes, it should cover that position.
Good. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Question decision on a position for permanent full-time public health emergency preparedness and communications coordinator.
Thanks again. So this is an updated job description for the public health emergency preparedness and communications coordinator for the health department. We did have that position previously, but Ryan left his position back in May, I believe it was. So we kind of reorganized and this is the new job description for that. And we would like to get this out and hopefully get somebody to fulfill that position. And in recent events, it's definitely timely and needed.
This is grant funded as well.
For a portion of that position, not the full position.
Okay, thanks, Shannon. Public comment on this agenda? Mission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the position for permanent full-time public health emergency preparedness and communications coordinator.
Second.
Moving second, discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, thanks, Shannon. Discussion decision on a job description for short-term public information officer position to assist the flood assistance efforts. Shannon, is this yours as well or Greg?
This would be Greg, and if he's not on the line, I could jump in, but I believe he was going to be here today.
I'm on the line.
All right, Greg.
Good morning. Yes, we are, we are making use of the public information, folks, right now. That's probably our greatest need and I appreciate approving this request.
Okay, do you have any kind of estimate on the duration of this job, just out of curiosity?
It really depends on what we do going forward with the stream bank stabilization, with the NRCS that we were discussing, whether we get public assistance and individual assistance. So I would guess anywhere from 30 days to six months.
Okay. Thanks, Greg. Public comment on this agenda? Mission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the job description for the short-term public information officer position.
A second.
Moving second, discussion. Is this something that is definitely funded?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
How is this position funded?
I believe that that will be part of our FEMA, we can get reimbursed up to 75% because this is part of our incident command structure.
Yep, that's what I was looking for. Great, thanks, Greg. Additional discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Question decision on Livingston Park County revolving loan fund policies and procedures, emergency and disaster amendment. What's Maria?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Mary Ann Keys from Extension, and we're coming back to you with an RLF emergency and disaster loan amendment because in the prior amendment, it was done during COVID-19 and rates were substantially lower than they are at the moment. So the amendment, if you open up the PDF, just changes the rate from a lock 3.75 to Wall Street Journal prime plus up to 2% at the discretion of the board, the RLF board. And then also increases the amount from $10,000 to $20,000 and then increases the payback term to six years with up to a 12-month affirmative period set by the board at the beginning of each disaster. The commission was very thoughtful when you approved this. It goes into effect at the beginning of each county declared disaster and emergency period. So the board sunsetted the COVID-19 disaster last week because I don't know if there's final closure from the county on that yet. But this, this will start, it started two weeks ago when the flood disaster was incurred. And then these loans, if you approve them and the city approves the language, should go out the door next week. And they're just another tool in the toolbox for businesses to help get that working capital so they can make it through either to the end of this season or all the way to the beginning of next season. They're not intended to fund for the entire year. They're just intended to be a tool in the toolbox to help build that capital to get there.
And this is a program within the existing agreement, so it holds the same terms with your spectacle review committee and.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, good, thanks, Mary Ann. Public comment on this agenda? Mission discussion.
Thank you, Mary Ann. We do need every tool in the toolbox. I move that we approve the Livingston Park County revolving loan fund policies and procedures, emergency and disaster amendment.
Second.
Moving second, discussion. One question, the kind of related, I'm trying to recall in our basic agreement, how is the interest rate determined? Is it just fully at the discretion of the loan committee or is it tied to something?
I will have to go look at the main RLF policies. This one is the discretion of the board at the beginning of the disaster, so it doesn't move with the loan committees.
Right.
And the reason it's up to 2% is that they wanted the ability to keep it low or right at prime, depending upon the severity of the disaster and the length of recovery time.
I can just look back, but I'm just hoping that the, whatever we do is consistent with current interest rate of our.
I would agree with you completely. Otherwise, I'll be coming back pretty soon.
Okay, good or not, I'll leave it there. Thanks, Mary Ann. Additional discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks again.
Thank you.
No county board recommendations today, county department updates. Matt, you want to go first?
Sure, so my crew is working on Cinnabar Basin Road this week. We have quite a few washouts that occurred on that road. Just a little bit ago, I forwarded you a map showing you all of those. Because of the narrow width of that canyon, the steep side slopes, we're having to close down that road from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM just because there's no way to safely get traffic by us as we're working in there. We are building those washouts in a way that hopefully they don't occur again. Several spots have had washouts, I think, four years ago that washed out again. We're pouring, we're putting in riprap, pouring concrete behind them and then replacing the road. So even in high water years, those shouldn't wash out again. Refuge Department with the MOU we had with the city, we started transporting some of our waste over the hill to Logan landfill. That has gone incredibly well just because of the size of landfill and the unloading area. It sounds like that's actually working even better than the transfer station. And so that's really exciting to see. And with each roll-off or compactor we dispose of there, we're saving about $500 in disposal fees. And that's most of what I've got.
And just by your honor, I did send to you some communications I had with the city manager with respect to which, to what zone in terms of coverage for people who wanted to bring materials to the public radio, the transfer station. And I'm going to try to sort that out today and bring some finality to that. So I think they wanted to basically see what kind of volumes they got. So I think they wanted to basically see what kind of volumes they got.
Okay, great.
I'll follow up.
All right, thank you.
Thanks Matt. Mark?
Uh, yeah. So the museum, we have some meetings with some past managers this afternoon. Should be on show one projects we've been working on. Of course, board meeting this evening with the county board. Yesterday, we finished moving all of our property from the flooded off-site storage. So big thank you to the volunteers who helped me with that. It's nice to get everything back at the museum and onsite. Should save us some money. Well, it will save us some money going forward too. I'm working with MRL to get some new signs up along the right of way. So hopefully, hopefully those, that will happen soon. Walking tours started last night. We had to cut back a bit from our original slate of four nights a week. We're now doing them three nights a week. We had some volunteers that had some things come up and then, so they had to back out for the summer for hosting those. But we're still doing three nights a week. Ghost and Ghost Signs, Gateway City, and which is a new one, showing the ties between Yellowstone and Park County. And then of course, the Bar and Montana Brewery tour. So that will start this Thursday. Friends are starting their, their Give a Hoop campaigns, so get the word out about that. That helps support, of course, programs and operations at the museum. Also, we are trying to get the word out that we're collecting artifacts and stories related to the flood. It's, you know, some people think it might be kind of soon, but if we get those artifacts and stories now, we're sure they're recorded in county history. So, um, that's kind of where we are.
I'll give you Carbella Bridge if you fish it out of the river. It's like a piece of it.
Still county money.
Hunter's offered to do that. You know that.
Yep.
Okay, we'll talk after this thing.
Yeah.
It may take several flights. All right, Lisa?
Yes, good morning. We're pleased that we have most of our summer positions filled with, out at the fairgrounds and in the road department and in the county attorney's office all summer, intern, short-term positions. So that's good. And so now we'll post these positions for the health department. And we have the emergency services PIO positions filled, so that's good. So it's great to see very few job openings up on the job board. I think it's really, yeah, it's really turned around, so that's good.
We need a party or something to meet all these people.
We do.
Lots of new folks.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks Lisa. Gary, anything to add that's here?
We got positions posted. So right now, three vacant positions in our office are posted. They were up last Friday. And so we're really excited about that.
So are we.
Yeah, but you are. And then just in terms of what's going on, we're, we're leadership forty-nine, we're recruiting for class year nine. Those applications are due on the thirtieth. And then we're also able to add a little bit of capacity to the Gardner Chamber for a few weeks to help support them until they can finalize summer staffing. So we're excited about that. Then just Audrey Malcolm is working for us as a summer intern. So she's helped fielding some of those calls that we need, we need help with. And the fair is in like sixteen days.
Swallow hard.
Yeah.
Are we ready for that?
We're gonna be. It's like Christmas.
Okay, sure.
Exactly.
Thank you to you guys for, for doing, I mean, you guys have been amazing. You've been working with short staff for so long now. It's just.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we really appreciate it.
Yeah.
The end is near.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Shannon, are you still on?
I am, thank you. So the health department has just been, for the last couple of weeks, assisting the EOC in any manner that we can. And that effort's still going, ongoing. We are doing a lot of well-water testing because a lot of people's wells were flooded and we want to make sure that their water is safe for them to consume. With that, we added another drop-off day for water samples. Previously, it was just Monday before noon. We added Wednesday before noon and are taking those over to Bridger Analytical and Four Corners for people. We also are diligently, still unfortunately, dealing with COVID. We're getting a lot of cases again. And so we're working on that. And I'm excited to have that, that position approved and so we can get that posted and hopefully get that position filled and working on the budget.
Sounds like a lot on the plate. Thanks Shannon.
Yep.
Kristen, anything before the project?
I'm trying to think. Next week, after the rodeo is over, we will be breaking ground and pouring the pad for the public transit center finally. Doing, are doing quite a bit of FEMA flood documentation for the county and then trying to keep up with the other opportunities that are coming out. And then quarterly reporting will begin, you know, next week. So keep being pretty busy.
Yeah, sounds good. Thanks Kristen. Mike, anything before the project update?
Yeah, good morning. Oops, sorry.
Go ahead.
I didn't hear who he had asked. I thought it was me. Go for it.
He did it.
Yeah.
Oh, he did? Okay. Okay, thanks. So over the past week, we've been focused on our substantial damage assessments, working with a team of DNRC folks. In fact, three teams that came out. And so we wrapped those up over the weekend. Those teams have moved on to Stillwater and Carbon Counties. So we're not sure exactly when they're going to be back in Helena and be able to get that information. Most of what we did in the field, they just plug in information. And we won't know what those assessments look like until they provide those back to us. We do have the original CAT team report, which we'll be able to cross-reference any of those properties that we were unable to access. We tended to stay in public rights of ways and not enter onto private property unless we were invited in. And then just kind of getting back into regular planning work, we've had a lot kind of build up over the past two weeks while we were focused on the flood. And then we're getting a lot of calls, mainly riprap, bank stabilization, what do I do now? And so we're, we're going to be focusing on structures. We're going to try to get DNRC to provide assistance in some of the bank stabilizations, using our regional engineer. And then trying to figure out, I talked to Tracy Sears and she indicated that there may be a potential for the community to work towards future mitigation grants. So I'll be talking to Greg Coleman and trying to figure out what that would require of us. And then even the potential partnering with the city. So I'll keep you posted as I learn more about that.
Good. Got a lot on your plate. Hey, thanks Mike. Morgan, are you on this one? Greg? Still with us? All right, Greg Coleman, still with him? It looks like he dropped off. Yarka, are you here this morning?
Yes. Sorry for interrupting Mike. I didn't hear that. So we have been working away getting payroll set up because it goes out early this year. So payroll, the first payroll for fiscal year twenty-three actually goes out tomorrow for people in the bank on Thursday and checks on Friday. And so just getting all of the benefits updated with the health and open enrollment and pulling that in. And it's looking pretty good. And Lisa and I are going to double check that this afternoon. I would like to talk about the preliminary budget timing a bit. I feel like we need to have, would like to have one more meeting before I put out the preliminary budget. This week is a bad week. I don't know if you have time next week for a budget workshop, just to do a quick wrap-up. It will push out the preliminary budget by about a week because I have to do two public notices. So.
How do you feel about, how do you feel about Thursday, the seventh at one o'clock?
Now that works. Yeah, thank you.
Does that work for everybody?
Works for me.
One o'clock.
Actually, I have a conflict. If there's any chance of doing it earlier in the day, that would be helpful.
You want to do it at this eleven early, huh?
That would be perfect for me.
Yeah. Does that work? Yarka, is that okay with you? Okay.
Great. Thank you.
All right, you got that?
Yep.
Good. Thank you. Okay.
Who's in charge of the donuts?
Whoever brings it up there now.
Who has the best donuts in town?
I'll bring them. I want to make sure I get everything in my budget, so.
Did I miss anybody out there? I don't think so. Public transportation. Kristen, you talked about the transit facility. What's up with getting close, huh?
Yes. And then just kind of filling in a little bit for Cheryl, her, our coordinator, her mother unfortunately passed away last Friday. So she's out of town for the next week. So just working on regular Windrider task.
Okay. Feels valid communication project?
I think Greg might, if he's still on, he wasn't still on, was he? I think he needs to talk to you guys about two more pieces of equipment that need to be ordered for this project. So I will forward you that email communication.
Okay, that'll be interesting to see. I thought we were. Okay. Travis Fountain Road, I don't have anything to you.
Still there?
It's still there. Cybersecurity network upgrades?
Um, no update.
Okay. Guard gap and groupments plan.
And that is in the draft stage right now.
Great. Minimum allocation infrastructure project.
You will have on the twelfth of July, one request, not for minimum allocation, I'm sorry, for ARPA funding. Minimum allocation, we, I did hear yesterday that the fairgrounds, water and sewer infrastructure project has been approved by the state. So we'll be seeing some of those contract documents. And then we are working with Cook City Water about some changes they need to make. So you guys may see another request from Cook City Water. We do have some funds left in minimum allocation that could help them with additional expenses they are incurring because of the flood up there.
What do we have left in our, in our pool for minimum allocation?
It's around a hundred and forty thousand. We never got any information back from Gardner. And then you had the request from Clyde Park, but I think you guys were interested in working with unincorporated communities of the county without funds.
Right. Okay. Thanks Kristen. Public comment for the other projects? Okay, getting better. We're catching up.
Yeah.
Almost there?
Almost there.
Any corrections, comments?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the meeting minutes for June twenty-first for the election canvas results for a budget workshop on June fourteenth, for the workshop on June fifteenth, and regular meeting minutes for May tenth.
Second.
Moving to second, discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks Carla. Concerned items, the other correspondent's public comments.
Um. The solid waste board has met. We're ready to go for July one. Logan, that's good news. The airport board met yesterday. Seems like things are going to start moving there at the airports. Fireworks, some new hangars being built and runways and taxi lanes. So that, that's also good news. Things are starting to happen around the county. We had a little stall on the June thirteenth, but things are starting to go again.
Good news.
That's what I have.
Okay. Mr. Burke?
I've been in Gardner the last two evenings about seven PM and the big new parking lot on Park Street had one to three vehicles in it, quite possibly employees. Motel parking lots were very empty. It's, it's very quiet in Gardner for late June. I stopped by the immigrant store on my way to Livingston this morning. They actually said they're seeing steady business. So, you know, maybe the closer you get to the closed north entrance, the trickier it's going to be here. Also heard from Wesley Jones, who's an Old Yellowstone Trail South resident near the park boundary. Looking for better news for access into the park, aren't we all? And is hoping that the, the flood will accelerate the flat project work on the Yellowstone Trail South. Don't know that there's a direct correlation there, but I'll visit with Matt about that. Had productive meeting with NRCS yesterday and State DES, and that led to the public comment today. Kyle, who's on our incident team and with State DES, is engaged and would like to kind of be part of that discussion in case the state can play a helpful role. And lots of ongoing contact with Silvergate, Cook City, Gardner, Park Service and Forest Service. We've got some good partners out there that we're working through this with. That's it.
Okay. Not much to add. Been listening in on a number of phone calls. The Yellowstone National Park, Gardner-Cook call last Wednesday. Meeting in Cook City was really well-attended last Thursday, probably at least a hundred and thirty folks in the room. I knew some of them, but holy cow, there are a lot of folks up there right now. And I think they were really happy to hear the good news from the park and so was I. It's looking better with every passing week. Met yesterday with a couple of folks from the Minneapolis Federal Reserve. They're working on an impact, economic impact study to support some things from FEMA coming down in terms of visual assistance. Looks like their read is that we do qualify for that, which is good news. And so we'll see where that leads. And they'll be back in town off and on again for probably the next three weeks. We'll have plenty of opportunities to follow up with them. Got the museum meeting tomorrow afternoon, late evening. And Economic Development District Board meeting on Tuesday, or the following Wednesday, two transportation meeting, which is the annual original schools free. That's all I have. Mr. Comments? Mr. Tinsley?
I have none.
Mr. Burke?
Mako Board of Directors meeting started eight minutes ago. I'm trying, I'll jump on that as soon as this is over, but I have other things going on too, so I'll be in and out of that. Had a rail authority executive committee meeting yesterday. Headed to Bozeman tonight for a fundraiser for flood relief for Southwest Montana, focusing on Gardner, Cook City, Silvergate, Paradise Valley and Red Lodge. The Custer Gallatin Forest is hosting another virtual update July first. That's this Friday at eleven in the morning. I want to give out a shout-out to Michael McCormick. He will be honored the twenty-ninth at the Elks Lodge from six to eight PM. Not sure I can make that, but he is a stand-up citizen and deserves all the accolades we can give him. And just a shout-out for the incident team members who have come and gone to help us in Park County with our flood response. There have been some real high achievers who have done some great work and have been terrific to work with, who will be great contacts, contacts moving forward in terms of building our capacity and our network around the state. That's it.
Okay. Nothing else from me?
Mr. Chair, I move we adjourn.
My second.
Moving to second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Shannon, aye? Thanks, everybody.